Okay, we're good. Let's call this time is only the order. We'll hear Washington in a few minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve the February 12, 2019 planning permission minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any votes on favor?
Aye.
You vote.
One is赞成. No, it is for our.
Let's go to staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Shider for the board meeting next week. There were so far since January 1st, forty-four family home permits. Since January 1st.
Fifteen more?
Yeah. Uh, and that's adjusted this calendar year. Um, yeah. We have different numbers that we keep because we've got a budget number and we've got a, and a year number, a calendar year number. Budget number is based upon the budget year, um, and it does match up. So, we have to report out the annual amount for several years because that's how everybody else calculates. And we used to only report on fiscal year, but when we're talking budget numbers, we have to deal with fiscal year stuff.
So, it's forty-four?
It's forty-four as of...
Today.
Brady, this is today, Americans. This is November. So, we're doing about, we've got several commercials, permits going on, um, to update new month construction. The marketplace has Taco Bell. They have passed every inspection so far. The only thing left is a final. Um, they cannot pass it as of yet because they don't have power from energy. Um, that could delay the open. They are worried now with furniture. Um, they are in the rapid stages of, of the final bits and pieces of it. However, if they don't have power, they can't open. Their goal is to be open before Christmas. Um, looking at your calendars, they got a short timeline. The gas company is right now installing the gas mains in the subdivision, the development. Um, they can't open without gas either. Um, so, they are really up against it. They are, if you drive by that site during the daytime, it's packed with all kinds of different contractors. So, they're very busy, which is good. They're moving forward. Scooters, um, much smaller project, they are a little bit behind. They poured the curves for their project today. Um, and it looks like they're probably gonna have to pour the remainder of their parking and drive-through area in concrete as well because they're not gonna need asphalt now at this dimension. Um, they are planned to be open before January 31st. Um, things are moving quickly. The streetlights are in the development. They are thriving, um, and they will be going on as soon as the energy shows up to turn power off. Okay, same scenario. Um, the traffic lights have hit a little snag and they are waiting until Friday to start the install. So, all the road closures, if you are driving through that area regularly, you can see the road closures have changed. Now, it's northbound down in One Lane. That's gonna be, um, in that little area for the remainder of the week or until such time as the contractor finds the water leak and the brand-new water leak. When we did the pressure test, they had to pull that line up to one hundred and fifty PSI, um, which is the max those lights are supposed to have. Um, and it's got open for two hours. It was not opening yet. They opened it, we found one, fixed it, and the other one is under the highway. Um, now, that's installed at a case unit, so they're working on it now. They hope to have it discovered tomorrow, um, and hopefully fix and start the repair of the road and stuff on Thursday, which will then allow all new traffic control to come in for street, traffic light install. Um, all the traffic lights stop passing along before they can open the Taco Bell or any of the other stuff, um, because if you've been in that area with a garbage truck, a hospital driver, anything else, it's, it's a bummer, right? You know, there's a lot of traffic goes through there, hence the need for the stop. Um, so, there's a bunch of stuff that we all want, all that. They are on pace to, to make it. Everything will be done absent something catastrophic again happening, um, or utilities not being turned on. Um, they will both of, um, KCIRB storage on South End Tower. I'm sure you've seen it going up. It's the big building on South End. That's one of six of those buildings that we're building. The road entrance, is there to get board? You can see it. It's a rather large, they did all concrete as well. Um, they have already got the foundation in for building two, um, and they will start it as soon as they can, um, in the spring, it looks like, um, to finish the rest of it, um, and potentially building three. Their original plan was to have a building, potentially one building a year. Um, so, developed over six years, their current estimate is, the building is going up, it's apparently leased completely already, um, so they're already gonna start the next one. They're gonna wait in this. So, they're moving forward quickly. It's probably gonna be opening quicker, sooner rather than later, um, but that project is moving forward. White Island Ridge, uh, just pulled their foundation only permit so that they can start digging the foundation, eight thousand square foot building, eight, nine hundred square foot building, something like that, big foundation. It's gonna take them a while to do that. They're wrapping up the remainder of their building plans now, um, and that one will be over winter, the next spring, into the summer, um, for the same direction. Um, and then lastly, I'm missing one part. Oh, um, first part, which is the industrial development, you all approved of their plan. They are finalizing the, um, design plans on stormwater, water sewer, stream, all that. It's been through the engineer once, comments have been submitted, um, they may reply back to us associated with that. Our engineers have now submitted their second round of comments. We're waiting for the final plans. If they get all those changes made, uh, in accordance with our engineers' approval, it needs all of our standards, then we'll be able to start constructing that development. That development has a, um, potential project that we anticipate is gonna be on tonight, but because of our stormwater requirements for that building, um, they had to put it off. They're looking now for a January meeting to come to us for a supplement or a manufacturing and cultivation facility, um, assuming it's a medical marijuana license.
Just on the...
Right. Then, they have to release it, the state has to release that information by December 31st. My understanding is they're moving to get those permit E's identified earlier so they can all get started on their process of getting constructed, um, because nearly every one of these facilities in the state, there are sixty cultivation facilities and...
Cultivation is at December 26th, manufacturing begin the January 10th.
No.
That's best series January 24th.
They adjusted their dates even though they were not supposed to be able to, so...
Yeah.
So, what that means is, um, nearly every one of the cultivation and manufacturing facilities will likely be brand-new facilities, um, because of some of the special concerns associated with, you know, the super treatment, et cetera. Finding a building that has all of that stuff in place is pretty rare. We don't have a lot of vacant manufacturing facilities around this area. Um, so, most of these will be new, so that delays the start of the actual manufacturing. Um, and the cultivation will go up pretty quick, um, but the manufacturing kicks in, um, and then the, um, actual dispensaries will come after that. Um, we'll have better information as soon as it comes. You will know it, it will leave in the papers. Watch the news, you'll see.
No, that was made from the paper, right?
You have to see the same footprint everywhere that pop that cultivation in there. Yeah?
No.
It's all over the board. Very few, if any, will have dispensaries in the manufacturing or the cultivation side, um, although I think they technically can, they have to isolate, which is fine, but I don't think they will because most communities like us, um, have put the burden on, um, manufacturing and cultivation facilities into heavier districts, um, and allow dispensaries in a little lighter districts, um, so that, uh, they don't really fit very well. The cost of construction, the access, all that, so, um, but I anticipate if that happens, we will be in a very busy January as well. That aspect of it is all, the last bit, my staff unfortunately on the comprehensive planning for next year, um, but before I get there, I'll lay it out. If there are any questions about any of the construction going on, we'll answer those down in. Then, we'll go to the car discussion.
What was the date of completion of Price Shopper?
Um...
No idea. No idea?
Either the suburbs or the marketplace or the actual Price Shopper?
Well, the actual Price Shopper.
Yeah. They've got, they have a report, a permit, yeah, they've got their invoice, they're waiting. They have an issue with, uh, they use concrete panel walls, um, with all the construction going on everywhere, they're having a very hard time finding a manufacturer available for it within a time limit. Right now, their best guess is April before their concrete walls show up. So, that's gonna bump them substantially into, um, out screaming in the summer before they can, they can get open. It's a six-month turnaround from everything going well from that's the time they start the construction of the building to the time they're able to, um, or to the time they're turning it over to the owner, and the owner's got thirty days coming to that.
If you wanna pick up some heavy building plans, they're up there in front of us.
Yeah, I'll have that, yeah.
With their invoice.
Yeah. They're about this big round, and it's big old paper. Yeah, there's a bunch. It's about a hundred and forty-eight pages of, of this big, so, a lot of, lot of stuff.
I have two questions.
Sure, sure.
Uh, one, uh, an occupier for the old Price Shopper building has not been identified?
Um, I believe the owner was in working with a couple of holes.
Uh, it's private property, it's owned by a trust.
Yeah.
It's close to everything else.
Okay. My understanding is that there has been, um, pretty substantial communication with, um, Tractor Supply, Washington Department Home Developments, type of this, longer to go there.
I was just concerned like the, you know, standing there, empty.
No.
The other question I have...
The owner, the owner is the last person who wants that.
Having just returned from a visit to Colorado, uh, I was amazed at the city and the state and the counties' participation in tax revenue from medical, well, it's actually recreational there.
Yeah.
So, my question is, I mean, we were talking thirty percent on a model. Is Smithville enjoying any kind of additional tax revenue on medical dispensaries?
No, the constitutional minimum tax by the owners sets a four percent additional sales tax for the state, and it goes to a very specific provision of how that money gets spent. Everything else is just regular city sales.
Okay.
So, right now, we're two percent.
Okay.
All sense, so...
But we do have, there are applications for four dispensaries, no, three dispensaries.
Yes, three dispensaries, cultivation and manufacturing, five, five dispensaries.
Well, uh, three cultivation, one manufacturing, because all of them separate.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, three superior dispensaries, uh, in each one of those, yeah, it would be the standard two percent.
Yes, so, um, what the, uh, the sales on those would be, the annual sales, no woman idea at this point. Um, I understand the number of people that have pulled medical cards, um, is a little low. I wonder if they anticipated initially?
Yeah, the clinic is actually, a lot of clinics have been bothering the herb market and it's cost ended up.
Yeah, so, very busy day. So, any other questions about construction?
I have a question, um, not so much construction, but that, now, we have a lot down there.
Yes.
Markless.
Mark, excuse me.
Port outside.
Okay. I have a question, what's gonna happen with that? You could help with that.
Yeah, I, I can answer as best, as best, if I ask, when do you guys try to get rid of that? They have no direct plans, but if they wanna use the land around it, they gotta get rid of it. Um, it's an expensive proposition, they understand that. I will tell them that, um, about a week's worth of eight, um, dump trucks, six regular dump trucks, and two double dump trucks, you know, the long metal ones, um, have been running cycles in and out hauling, uh, the good rock, if there is such a thing, apparently there is for engineers. They've been hauling it over to, um, the Eagle Ridge, single-family development, um, to do some great changes in there, beneficial to them on the marketplace because they don't have to pay to have it haul off. Beneficial to them because they don't have to pay to have it all there, um, because usually you have to pay both the trucking and the charge of the, the fill.
And they're moving at half miles.
Yeah, not even, they're moving at about, about five hundred yards or so, so, um, they're just, trucks run in a big circle, um, and they, they stop that for now, um, and that, that develops in their constructions.
So, he's got, um, the area to discuss, uh, might need some work though.
Somebody asked whether we could see Smithville?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. What, what the force that see that don't understand is that it's tiny compared to the hill on the other side of it that was made when the original project, the commons was done, um, because there are, uh, there's a full fifty-four feet of fill, engineered fill to build that flat wall and faucet, um, and it's considered, okay, there's a nice bit of...
Really good fill.
Some of it is, some of it is not so much, so, um, they are almost on the phase two construction already, so, um...
Yeah, I saw those three lots.
Yeah, they have, um, one of them is under contract, trying to finalize that contract for the south east corner, just north of Croft. Um, I understand the one on the north side of their entrance road is also, um, newly written contract. Um, if that's the case, and those things ultimately happen, they will also allow lots of, um, within a year of starting construction, so, they're ruder book. Um, they're gonna be coming in for the next phase sometime over the next few months to bust up several more lots so they can sell those. Um, that project's moving a little faster than what we had anticipated it to be. That's all you have?
Any other interest in marketing?
Um, like I said, every lot will be full, um, there are four lots sold. Price Shopper's got one, Porter's got one, Scooter's got one, Taco Bell's got one. The south lot is, uh, identified on the, the plat nap that they, they gave me, it's under contract. Um, I suspect, I've got suspicions as to who and what may be going there, but there's suspicion, nothing confirmation that I can speak into my mind. Um, and same with the other, it's a ruder, but it's a very persistent ruder, it's coming from multiple sources that I, I, uh, I suspect have heard from somebody who looseless some information, so, somebody spoke out of turn and it's kind of not getting out of the script, but I won't be the one to confirm ruder nine until I can confirm ruder nine, so, um, from that standpoint, that's...
Don't worry, we're just...
So, with all, if there are no more questions about construction, I'm gonna give you an update on the comprehensive plan process for next year. We had some meetings, um, with the senior leadership, the mayor, et cetera, as to what we wanted our, um, role for the strategic planning process that you all were involved in, the strategic plan of the future IQ did, how that worked, and how that would tie in with the comprehensive planning process that started. Um, based upon that, we crafted a RFQ for a consultant to assist us in that endeavor. Um, some of the elements, some of the essential elements of it were that the strategic plan, the community-based strategic plan that we just included, and the pillars of performance in that would be incorporated into this new comprehensive plan, um, by the successful consultant. And we had several very qualified applicants, um, one of which was the one who drafted our existing one, one of which was the company who did the strategic planning process, Future IQ. Um, there was a committee setup of staff, the mayor, Deb, um, Steve was on it, I think another alderman was on it, so we had several people on the committee evaluating all those, interviewed two of them, those two finals I identified. Based upon the committee recommendation, we compared a contract with Future IQ that we just awarded a week ago. We've already started that process, getting the contractor, the consultant together, starting to get a plan together. Here's who will come in. Um, it appears as though the primary steering committee, um, will be you. So, we have seven members, potentially two or three other members of the general public that will be coming in. Um, so, we'll have steering committee, and then we'll have task force groups to meet on each of the strategic pillars that are gonna be, um, tied in from the strategic plan into the rest. Those task forces will have housing, um, the economic development, um, that those, there are four of them. The education pillar that's in the existing plan is already being handled with a separate entity, and that's the school board and the board of aldermen in a joint effort, they're working together already, um, that started last month. So, they're already working on that, um, and that one won't necessarily be part of the comprehensive plan, although there's information associated with education and, and that that needs to link this. So, to these task forces, there will be some time commitments that will be put on your list of requests. Uh, part of it will be these steering committee meetings, but also will be these task forces. We're gonna want at least one of you on every one of the task forces. If you wanna be on all of them, you certainly can, um, if you have a lot of time, you certainly can, um, but we'll want at least one of you on each of them, um, and you all will be the eyes and ears as it may be, however you wanna say it, for the rest of the group, so that when the steering committee meets, we have feet on the ground of each task force so that that, that conversation can occur. All of the, um, um, I guess the facilitation, the discussions will be handled by Future IQ and David Burrow, um, the man who did the last process. Um, they have a subcontractor, a partner from a planning firm out of Washington DC that will be helping them as well, so we're gonna have, um, various and sundry things going on. Currently, as we speak, we have a rollout launch for the comprehensive plan for, scheduled for Monday, January 13th. Um, the exact time is somewhere between six-thirty and seven, we don't know for sure if we will have that in the fifth, we have to make sure whether the consultant will be fit and will be here. Um, and right now, we have two places reserved for it. One of them is gonna be in the Mid-County Library, in their room where all of the strategic planning stuff, a lot of the strategic planning stuff happened, um, and the other one is in the high school cafeteria. We reserve both of them if they don't have any people to expect. One of them hold fifty, the other holds a lot of them, um, so, right now, we don't know how to do it, how many people would we have? Um, they are currently, the consultants aren't been working on a website for us, um, and surveys and invites and all the stuff, if you recall, the process that went on this summer, similar to that. Um, so, you will, um, you will, as the planning commissioner, will get, um, a lot of the information because you're gonna be getting all the emails related to everything because you're the steering committee, um, but it'll be on Facebook page, we may, um, likely have a separate landing page on the website. Here's the complete stuff, so they'll go there, um, but all that's being created through the consultant will be working through then. Um, so, if you can, mark your, your calendars, hopefully it's not fully yet, January 13th starting at six-thirty, it's a couple hours, getting the rollout, education process, and the consultant wants to roll up sleeves and get started right then. So, we will start having conversations about some of the stuff right in and there. So, we will be coordinating the task force groups, um, and as soon as we have a better understanding of that, you all will be getting those emails, providing input to steering committee members, how to assist us in getting that done. When we get the list of people that will likely be on those task forces, based upon the people that provide this input, their strategic planning process, um, we'll want you to look at that, if you think there's another community member that needs to be on that list, or thinks would be good for that list, um, certainly write that information that we can send out direct inbox to those folks. So, um, if you have any questions about the comprehensive plan process, let me know.
Will you mention the two sub-bills we got up there?
Oh, yes, um, as a part of the comprehensive process as well, you had, um, one specifically I did, like, addendum that was added, um, that one of them could go out an additional, hey, what would it take to do a major road and trails plan, this department? Um, and the winning bidder also put in a, an additional recommendation of, um, for an additional fee. We'll do a chapter in the complaint solely on economic development, um, to kind of bring it to the forefront, um, which will help us not only how we develop, um, in, in the future language way, but what kind of businesses do our citizens want in our town? What kind of development do we need? Um, so, that would be in and in the trails, road trails project. So, all of those will be open at the same time. A lot of plates will be spinning, a lot of things will hire the consultant to spend. It won't just be staff. Any other questions about the comprehensive plan 2020?
Certain planning? Very nice.
These are vital, uh, vitally important. I will, um, be sending you an updated version of a training document, um, on comprehensive plan, on how it works, and the importance of it, and I'll send that out to you by a separate email, um, the one I have several, several years old, so...
Our contract is several, several?
Yes, yes. Usually governments are ten to twelve, fifteen years, uh, on the outside. We update, we trend it every ten years, and then it usually takes one. Our, was, was implemented in '05, so it'll be fifteen years. We're, we're due, um, but a benefit to us that makes it not so problematic is from about a year and a half after that was implemented to 2010 or 2011, we didn't really have any development in Smithville, we didn't have to worry about because of the, the company. Um, so, we didn't really get things too screwed up. Um, and now that it's back, we've got a lot of folks coming in. Since this 2020 is coming next year as well, um, current estimate is we're gonna be about twenty, right now, the estimate is twenty, or ten thousand, two forty-nine, um, and if you want to, um, create one of those Super Bowl things for what the actual number is, I'll make something up, we can do that. My number is just gonna be ten thousand four hundred and thirteen, put it on the record. Ten and four thirteen.
Great, great.
That, uh, so, if you have any questions about the comprehensive plan process, now ask it, later ask it. Always open doors to any email, call me, whatever, um, however you guys wanna do that. Um, as a release to call me, I apologize to Carmen, I forgot the analyst. You have requested a line. I'll get it together, I just, as I said, call me, I mean, it was a month ago.
And if, but if we didn't attend the land use discussion with David for strategic planning, we literally could throw this down on the table, and Whiteboard Mark has requested note, draw a crazy on this map. That's what, when you said all the states, we literally, we're all of our states, Mark in this map of, we're doing something out, you know, people on condos by the lake, you wanna, you know, sports day complex on the south side, whatever, we wanna throw out, that's more of a, okay, yeah, so, and the trail, we're gonna draw them all again.
Yeah.
I would say it was gonna be a task force meeting.
Now, it'll be a combination of... Now, it'll be a combination of myself, Cynthia, and Nikki Canwell.
Okay. I have a question. Can you give me a little bit about that?
This is got period.
The current list is the list of folks that used, that were used during the strategic planning process. And when they designated where they wanted to be, that's, so we get, I think there's a hundred and fifty-plus meetings that we have, so. Some of them are not going to be as useful for where we're at, because then they are going to, as a release of a task force member, they're going to be more of a information provider. So, the people from the regional council, or Clay County, or staff, we're more of a resource than a task force member. So, you know, there's probably twenty of those folks that will be coming out of that. So, a hundred and thirty people on those lists. These are important, the most important thing you can do with these is show up and be active in them. If you miss two meetings, and you come and you're really asking a lot of questions, you know, you're slowing down the rest of ours, so you really need to be in it. We have not coordinated how we're going to get the information out as these meetings go on, whether they're going to be recorded or anything, I don't know. But the goal will be to start the process, roll up sleeves, everybody work pretty hard where they want to.
We know a pretty question about, like, using housing stuff.
I've got a feeling I know what you're going to talk about, too.
Yeah, I do.
I raise a pardon, that's what that is.
Yeah. I see more.
What are your reports for?
The last bit of my stack report is, if you remember our last meeting, there were several items that I indicated were going to be on the agenda. One was a conditional use permit for a new waiting venue that man sold before they could get a contract to, a conditional contract to bring it for that. So, that's all. Somebody else walked away. That ones out, I spoke about the medical marijuana stuff. And some of the other planning issues that I suspect are having troubles with surveyors and engineers getting, everybody's just absolutely swamped. And we'll go over that here, when we start talking about our security.
Thank you for an excellent report. Jack, let's go down to the states of Wilkinson Creek, final one, single phase final. We will dispensing, there's no public hearing, come in, in the area.
No, open, go ahead, we've opened.
Open public hearing, closed public hearing.
See, nothing to close, don't care. So, we've opened and closed the public hearing. To clarify, the only items really are, I've chosen the stack report based upon a condition to be, that I would recommend, if you recommend approval, put a condition on it. And part of that, surveyors are all real busy. If you look at the flat, preliminary flat that you see there in lot seven, in part of lot six, in part of track A, there is supposed to be an easement for the new regional pumping station. And we grabbed a name that is installed already, but we never got an easement fifteen years ago when it was installed. It comes through those lots down to where this regional pumping station is going to be. Everybody's swamped. Our engineers use a different control point than the engineers identified on this. So, when we gave them all the data, and we plotted it out, everybody didn't know. Something's wrong, because the sewer line left started in the middle of the field and ended in the middle of the field. It's got to go somewhere, so. We got that figured out about ten days ago. They have not wrapped up all of that surveying work, because it requires a survey. We've given them all the data and the proper control points. That occurred on November twenty-seventh. So, we are hoping that that will wrap up. In that stack report, you will see that we recommend that any approval be conditioned upon the specific language in there, which identifies the documents and the dates of the letters as to what has to go where. We anticipate before this gets to the board call in the next weeks, that we'll have all that. But without that conditional approval, and that condition being placed on it, there is no requirement to put that in there. And we've already had a bunch to build that conversation, so for this year, so we kind of need to get it figured out.
Do you have, who is?
Yeah, the very last page in the actual staff recommendation. It's a very long paragraph. You can make reference to it specifically, or you can read it out loud in a motion. There are seven lots. They're all fairly large, the smallest is seven point two acres, the largest is ten point five six acres, sixty-three acres total in lots. Stormwater has been a big concern of the community. If, assuming that each of these lots has a five thousand square foot footprint for house and a twelve thousand square foot barn on it, which would be a hundred by a hundred and twenty feet, big building, that'd be seventeen thousand square feet. If everyone who did it, there would be less than, well, just over four point zero zero two percent of the total lot area covered. According to our engineers, if it's less than thirty percent, you don't even really consider it is a stormwater issue. There's too much vacant land for the water to properly calm, as you say. The problem with stormwater is when you consolidate it and speed it up, it erodes. In this scenario, the impermeable surfaces are subsette. There is no need for infrastructure associated with slowing the water down. The other aspect of it is on your, the states of Wilkinson Creek, the flat they have before you, the dark gray stuff, that's the flood plain. Our engineers tell me the worst thing we can ever do as a community is actually put detention inside flood plain. Flood plains where bikes layout and design, it is one already. It detects water. That's what it's for. So, you don't want to start your, messes with that aspect of it. So, there is no full water, infrastructure needed based upon the number of lots seven and the amount of traffic on the road, which is average of twelve vehicles a day. It's the average daily traffic on this road at the highway. So, there's no need for road improvement. It's a gravel road. It is what it is, and it, as it related to all the other aspects of it, this doesn't even get to anywhere close to the numbers that the traffic study that we just saw. If you recall, we gave the traffic study for the Diamond Creek paperwork. At the last meeting, as it related to that traffic study, and it was sixty lots, and it didn't generate any public infrastructure needs there either, so. All of that is in place, and if you have any questions about it, I'll answer whatever.
The access road is, appears to be, to be in gray zone. Does that mean theoretically, it could potentially be under water from time to time?
In a five-hundred-year flood, it theoretically could, yes. And all the way down at the extreme east end. I will tell you that the only portions that we're aware of, if you look to the far east on this, which is roughly where that road turns, that starts heading north, that's all right, that road there has been vacated a couple of years ago. That area, right there at that corner, is the only area that our folks have ever seen water get over the road, and it's not even a road anymore.
Does it bear?
Doesn't need a wall, but that's where, that's the only place we've ever seen it go.
Yeah, I'm moving away from single areas, final flat, based on Wilkinson Creek, based on staff recommendations for conditional. Upon revision of the flat, according to the engineer's letter from November twenty-nineteen, specifically a place to sewer pump station, and those should be gravel line and easement, as advised by the city's engineers, submitted to the African House November twenty-nineteen.
Second.
I get it, if you guys.
You got it.
Any discussion?
No, sorry.
Mark, you have something?
Mark, seven.
Oh, yeah, Connor, seven. Any other discussion questions? And we go to the boys.
Okay, nope, no call. Connor?
Hi.
Alderman Sarver?
Hi.
Carmen?
Yes.
Deb?
Hi.
Mayor Bulley?
Hi.
Dennis?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Seven zero.
Your vote. This will go on the agenda for the next, next week's meeting, and will follow the second reading of the rezoning.
Before I roll into adjournment, please tell you that it's a pleasure serving with you this year on this mission. This is our last meeting of the year. I know we all wish, we all want you a very, very Christmas and happy holidays.
Thank you.
I hope you're so happy. Second?
Who is the second? Okay, Dennis.
All favors, yeah.
A lot of them.
I don't know.
Well, my F B C, you're not. Deb?
Yeah.
Are you, I'm asking, um, very busy in the house.